Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, I want to start the meeting. So in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided added notice of this meeting by setting notice of the time, date, location, and extent known. The agenda of this meeting, sorry, the agenda of this meeting to Asbury Park Press, the new poster on March 4th, 2002 via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the administrative building, building volunteer board, district schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on March 4th, 2022. Our mission statement, "Asbury Park District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education wherever anyone possesses skills and character to succeed in a diverse evolving global society." Roll call, please.
Ms. Halls. Ms. Breach.
Here.
Mr. Grillen.
Here.
Mr. Lloyd Roper.
Here.
Mr. Remming. Ms. Ricks.
Here.
Mr. Snyder's. Ms. Zizinski. Ms. Cook.
Here.
Please rise and fasten.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Right. So this month, we tried to change up our presentations because we realized that our students were remaining until 7 o'clock and sometimes that was a little bit past their normal time to get into their structure of either homework and dinner and at least be children. So what we will be doing moving forward is our 6 o'clock works session, we'll be doing our student presentations during that time. And so this evening, we have two presentations. We have our Student of the Month presentation and then we also have our Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School Council of Student presentation led by Principal Perry Medina and his selected representatives of the Council of Students. So I would like to begin with the Students of the Month and then we will quickly transition into the presentation of Mr. Medina and the Council of Students. Okay? So with that being said, Thurgood Marshall, Principal, Dr. Warren Jackson.
There you go, it's on.
Well, sorry, excuse me, it's still a little early, so we'll move to Bradley Elementary School, Ms. Thea Jackson Byers.
Good evening, Asbury Park Board of Education. At this time, it is a pleasure to introduce the Bradley Elementary School Student of the Month, Ms. Jade Henry Evans. And just to let you know, Ms. Jade Henry Evans is also part of our student council and she was actually, she was so excited to question Dr. Adams when she had her first meeting with him. So thank you, Ms. Jade. Mom and Grandma, and please come on up. Come on up, come on up. And as always, Mom, you know, it is a pleasure. We say thank you, we want to give you your flowers. Thank you for blessing us with Ms. Jade and we want to say thank you.
This is for you, Jade.
Now, of course, we have to have some spirit where and Grandma and Mom, we have something for you too. We have to make sure.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson Byers.
Thank you, Dad.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Martin Luther King Upper Elementary, Principal Perry Medina and his student.
Good evening. Our Student of the Month, Martin Luther King Jr., is Naieli Torres-Wentez. Maybe she's a little late, but Naieli is an excellent student as all of our Students of the Month are. Very proud to have her and it's an honor to be her principal. Thank you.
So if she comes, we'll make sure that she receives them. Dr. Howard Morris, will you please come up? For your Student of the Month. Is your student here? Ciara Martin Hernandez. Martinez. No, okay, well just.
Hello. Good evening. Ms. Sarai Martinez Hernandez entered the Asbury Park School District as a preschooler. So she's a lifelong Asbury Park educator. She's currently a 10th grader, Dream Scholar with a 4.3 GPA average. Not only does she do amazing academically, she's also very active in the school and the community. She's the National Honor Society. She's the yearbook editor. And she's a captain of the JV volleyball team. She was the winner of the 2021 Youth Bias Task Force Competition and her animated video submission. She's also a member of the Love Michael Campaign which she works for and raises money for the foundation that advocates for individuals with autism that enter the workforce. So we're very proud to have this 10th grader be a part of the Asbury Park family. Thank you.
Oh my goodness, just come here, girl. Just come on up.
Don't be shy. So this is Sarai. Mom, come in. And here we have this for you, has some things in here for your mom as well. Yours?
I'm about to take your job.
One more.
You can't have it.
Too much. Thank you.
Also, she's also part of the Superintendent's Advisory Committee as well. Good job.
Good job. Okay, coming up, Dr. Jackson.
Good evening, everyone. The Thurgood Marshall Elementary School Student of the Month is Mr. Liam Castillo. I know there is a very good reason why my Liam is not here because he has been time checking me and quizzing me all week on when the meeting begins. So I'm sure it's a valid excuse, but Mr. Castillo is one of the most incredible young men that I have had the privilege of meeting. When we started Student of the Month in November, he has asked me every month if he has made the nomination list. So when I saw his name this month, I jumped out of my seat and when I called his name over the loudspeaker, he ran to the office in excitement. He is such a wonderful young man and Liam Thurgood Marshall congratulates you and appreciates you for being so wonderful and we have a bag of his favorite items.
So as you know, it's our focus to highlight some of the activities that are going on in our schools. It's a good way to promote what we're doing. It's a good way to recognize our staff who work with our students who often go unrecognized for their hard work and dedication. And so with that being said, we've had presentations from all of our schools leading up to this month. So without further ado, we have Mr. Perry Medina who will lead us with this presentation for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Jackson. So I'd like to welcome to the white line, select.
All right, we're gonna let Ms. Dr. Jackson give her speech with you present.
Good afternoon, Liam. Mom and Dad, please come up, please come up. The Thurgood Marshall Elementary School Student of the Month this month is none other than Mr. Liam Castillo, who is a 3rd grade student at our wonderful school. Liam has been asking me every month since we started Student of the Month, "Dr. Jackson, what are you doing Student of the Month, Dr. Jackson?" And when I saw his name come on the list this month, I jumped out of my chair and he ran to the main office in excitement. He is such a wonderful school citizen, so kind, so caring, always attentive, always willing to help others, just embodies the character of a true young gentleman. So Mom and Dad, thank you for all that you do. Liam, thank you for all you bring to our school. We appreciate you. And here is a big bag of your favorite things, okay? Congratulations.
Come on, buddy.
You are trying to put me in a position.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Perfect timing. Okay, so back to our regular program, Mr. Perry Medina.
All right. I think I'd like to actually have join with me Ms. McManus and Ms. Norman, two CST workers who are actually great facilitators of the Council of Students. The Council of Students, a group of civic leaders, a program that started last year for us. They are great overseers and facilitators of the culture and climate in the building. We really go to them to find out what they're thinking, what they would like to see and what they would like to see further developed. So I'd like to recognize our select members from the Council of Students. If you guys can rise, please. And come over to the white line. And then we have our first speaker who's going to come to the mic and set up and will present to you, to the board, a little bit about what they have been working on as it relates to the school, the climate, the culture, and student life.
This is our vision. The Council of Students will be the civic example for all Asbury Park School District students.
This is our mission. The Council of Students will help create and shape pathways to positive experiences both socially and academically. The Council of Students will promote a sense of community in our school and will act as a voice for all students while demonstrating leadership, teamwork, and civic responsiveness. Students will be empowered by their role and apply leadership skills that can be leveraged as they transition to middle school and high school.
These are some of the things we have been doing to improve our school. Welcoming new students. We want all students to feel well, comfortable when they start at MLK. Pronoun use. We want students to feel included in their academic environment.
Next, we have locker proposal. We have created a proposal to present Mr. Medina about why students should be able to use the lockers. So hopefully, we would get the approval for the remaining of the year. Building aesthetics. We want to overall look and feel of the building to be better. Garden. We want our school garden to look beautiful so we can be discuss, discuss, discussing some upcoming plans. Food and cafeteria. We had some questions, concerns about the school food. So we met with the manager of Sedex to convert, to con, discuss, to discuss, yeah, discuss these concerns and learn, and learn a little more about food we eat.
These are some things that we have done and want to do to help our community. Can drives, beach cleanups, get organizations who care about it.
These are some things we do to help ourselves. Goal setting. Goal setting, goal, setting goals is important so you know what you want to achieve when you, when doing a project, writing paper.
Mental health and self-regulation. It is important to know what your feelings are and how to manage them. Mental health and self-regulation. It is important to know what your feelings are and how to manage them.
So thank you once again. That's actually very difficult for students, particularly at this age. Public speaking is one of the toughest things to do. So I'd like another huge round of applause for our Council of Students. I'm especially proud of them. Thank you, thank you. Thank you. This is, this is truly an honor. I'm particularly excited for them and what this means for their pathways moving forward. I know at their age, I would have dared get to a mic and speak in front of such prestigious members of the community. So they are well on their way to great things and one of our biggest goals is just to be the civic example of Asbury Park and this is the best of what we have and I couldn't be any prouder of the young men and women we have here tonight. Thank you again, once again, board.
Madam President, Board Members, some of those students that were represented this evening from Students of the Month as well as the Council of Students also sit on our Student Advisory Committee. And so we're building advocacy and efficacy in our students now. And this is a great example of the opportunity for our students to voice and have a voice at the table. So with that being said, that concludes my presentation for this portion of the meeting.
Thank you all once again. And if all the parents and children want to leave, feel free to do so. Okay, we're gonna start our committee reports. Connie.
Okay, the Athletic Committee met on the 14th of March. Can you hear me now? Basically, just went over the athletic banquet and the discussion of the Athlete Male and Female of the Year. Dr. Howard Morris and Mr. Japino are gonna meet with the coaches to discuss the process of that. We also had one of our students that was nominated for the NJ SIAA Scholar Athlete of the Year. That banquet's gonna be held March 31st for the students and their parents. I'm not sure if we can mention her name yet because I don't think we can. But if she wins, you'll definitely know about it. She participated in many sports and an outstanding student as well. We posted the sports, spring sports softball coach for the upper middle school. And we had a field update with the help of a grant from the Little League. They redid the fields at both the upper middle school and also the high school. The infield, they came out really, really nice. So they're all getting ready for our spring sports coming up soon. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you, Connie. Dominic.
The Finance Committee met. Let me just cover the incidental things. The district auditor has completed the annual financial audit. We've received an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get. There's been no findings and they'll make a presentation in April. Architectural Services Firm Administration is reexamining the allocation of ESER funds and we may delay the lesser priority projects to free up ESER funds to reduce the impact of the budget so that really just about all of our time was spent on the budget. To lay some, to set out some context to it, this was a year we've had even shorter notice than usual in terms of doing the budget. I don't know if you're aware, but the governor wanted to give his budget address in person and that required a delay of a few weeks for mask mandates to, to end. Gave us a shorter amount of time to deal with the budget. You may have also seen that an additional charter school was granted the opportunity to take high school students. So this coming budget, there will be $11 million in public funds that are passed through from the Asbury Park School District to charter schools. And the third piece of news you may have seen, the Education Law Center, a nonprofit, brought a lawsuit involving another district claiming that under the federal legislation that's been in place to provide relief during this two-year COVID crisis, in effect, COVID relief, ESER funding, that under that federal rule, you could not cut school budgets. And as you know, Asbury's budget has been cut significantly. The Education Law Center, one that sued at the first level, that would involve, if that were the end of it, $12 million coming back to the Asbury Park School District. The administration has reached out, has investigated that decision, as you might imagine, is being appealed by the state, the Education Law Center. In their own opinions, as they wouldn't anticipate a final victory if it were to come for at least two, possibly three years. The state obviously has not responded to us by giving us any additional money. So anything you've read about there may be $12 million coming our way, that's too indefinite and too far in the future for us to meet our legal and ethical obligations to the district, to our students, to our staff, to not move forward. This particular year, then, when the final numbers did come out, we were, we were expecting a reduction. However, we were not expecting the reduction of $8.6 million in state aid for next year. Over five years, we've lost 18, over 18 million. If you include 2023 reductions, our loss is now up to 20, almost 27 million. We had been anticipating cuts based upon state legislation called S2, which over five years was reducing what was called Adjustment Aid, aid that had been given to Asbury Park over the years that the state legislature determined was overfunding under the state formula used to provide a budget. Asbury has also been suffering from the issue of the local fair share, the state formula that determines how much a locality should be providing toward the school budget. And this year, they began to take away what's called Equalization Aid and that's the aid that represents the difference between what the locality has been paying and what the state formula says the locality should be paying. So hence, we have an even bigger problem going into next year, an $8.6 million problem. This board, in anticipating S2 over the past three years, and some are new, so some might recall, we had essentially committed and continued to do over the past three years, at least about $2 million each year toward increasing the locality's contribution through increase in local property taxes. In putting together this budget, we've mentioned before, we're looking at, well, we first looked at resignations, retirements, cuts, administrative things that could be done to reduce the budget. And we're looking at ESER funding as a temporary gap. We've used reserve funding in the past as a temporary gap. But the gap is huge this year. I think you're gonna see there's gonna be a difference of opinion on, on use of ESER funding among individuals. And the local fair share continues to be a moving target. When we, I should say, when I started and first realized what school funding was all about, Asbury taxpayers were paying about a little over $7 million, I'd say. And the local fair share under the state formula was over $17 million. Hence, we were looking at $2 million a year and kind of making it up. Does any of you know who are Asbury residents or if you're reading the paper? The school formula that then determines what a locality should be paying, they haven't made that public, which is something I think we should all push for, but that's just me talking. That's $17 million because of increase in value in properties and increase in income in the city is now at $23 million. The district is collecting, or I'm sorry, we've actually put it there. I'm still dreaming, $24, a little over $24 million. And the district is currently collecting a little under $13 million. So we've had discussions about what is the increase going to be in property taxes and what can we do on our side beyond the reductions to at least stopgap with temporary money? Either way, we also then need to look at and try to definitely get from the state, no matter how hard they try not to, exactly what the next two years are going to look like for us so that we can, we can plan accordingly. I'm gonna leave it at that for the budget discussion. I guess at the Finance Committee at that time, we were looking at raising taxes $2.5 million. The final budget, Mr. Hastings is gonna present. I think he'll do a, a presentation.
Well, I believe the Superintendent and I will have conversation with the board about it. Presentation is at the end of April when the board.
Okay, that's when we do the bigger one.
This is the adoption of the tentative budget.
Okay, so the tentative one now includes a $6 million increase in the local fair share. So that's where we are right now from the Finance Committee. I would present some other things then when we come back to discuss the budget at a later time. Is that how we'll do it?
So what I would like to do is probably add some context and during my 7 o'clock Superintendent's presentation, after we've recognized the Teachers of the Month, I would like to, if we have a larger audience, come back and revisit some of this conversation because it is critically important that the community know that the short window in which we were forced to work with required that we try to get as many people to the table to have a discussion about just. table to have a discussion about just what this eight point six million dollars meant to the community. And what I mean by the community, our school community, what the implications were to our students, what the implications were to our staff, and overall, the operational aspects of our school district. And so to give context, which is very important, on that Thursday afternoon, we received the notice about what our allocation was. Myself, Mr. Hastings, you know, picked ourselves up off the floor, first of all, after realizing the numbers, recovered, and then began to talk about a plan of action. Because no plan would not be effective, would be a lack of leadership, and really would not sustain not only the staff or our students in this community. So Friday, we began meeting. I put out a invitation to both associations, letting them know exactly what our budget shortfall was, waited until Monday to receive any correspondence, set up a meeting on Tuesday. That was a labor relations and a budget meeting. Earlier that Tuesday, met with my student advisory council, that PowerPoint is actually on our district website, went over what the financial implications meant to them as students, tried to make it as plain speak as possible, almost like kitchen table talk from a parent to a child, saying that we have some issues making the end to meet. And I think anyone who's come from a home, who understands that conversation. From that, that afternoon, had an ombud invitation to both our Human Resource Department, our Administrators Association, our Teachers Association was given an invitation to that meeting. We moved forward with that meeting, concluding with giving just the overall numbers of what was transpiring in the district regarding the cuts. But prior to that meeting, on Friday, myself, Mr. Hastings reached out to the county executive superintendent, asking for opportunities and information that could reprieve us from such a drastic cut. As we move forward into that Friday and into that weekend, exhausting conversations and calls, that Friday, we even met with the deputy liaison to the legislature, Ms. Esposito, for about an hour and a half, going over information of accuracy related to the fictitious twelve million dollars that we were supposed to be receiving, that we are not going to be receiving, to the allocation of our local fair share, equalization aid, and adjusted aid. On Tuesday, had that meeting. Wednesday, we worked again. I believe also reaching out to our local municipal leaders, had a meeting with them, including Deputy Mayor Amy Quinn, Mayor John Moore, and had the hard conversation, as well as our Finance Committee meetings, which took place, I believe, that Wednesday or Thursday. So here we are, almost a week and a half after getting that information regarding the eight point six million dollars, coupled with the eleven million dollars to charter schools, for a total of nineteen point six million dollars that we sent out the door. What's important to understand is that of our operational budget, eighteen percent is for benefits, forty-four point three percent is for salaries. For charter schools, it's another twenty-one point three percent that we send out, and out of district placement, another six percent. So we are operating on a district of eight point four percent. That other two percent for the mathematicians in the room is for utilities, the lights, the water, and everything else that we have allocated. So that eight point four percent that we have remaining is a hundred percent of what we have to buy supplies, to provide after-school opportunities and offerings for students, to provide extra pay for coaches, for sports, transportation. All of that is wrapped up in that eight point four percent. So without us looking at our ESSER funds and delaying some of the allocations, such as our HVAC programs, our, our increase, improvements, delaying buying furniture, and if you've been in some of our buildings, we have some of the oldest furniture. So we looked at what did we need as opposed to what did we want, and made hard decisions. And if you understand, sometimes you got to bag or buy a bag of potatoes and stretch it for a week. That's exactly what we're doing with this budget. We looked at every corner. And let me say this, we cannot balance this budget on reducing teaching staffs. They cannot bear the brunt of the cost of not moving forward with the allocation of the six million dollars. That is unfair to them. We are not a top-heavy administration. We have reduced from nineteen to ten. All of those are facts, not fiction. At this particular time, we do not have time to waste in hyperbole or finger pointing. This is a fireside chat, and the work has to get done. And that's what we've done, that's what we did, and that's what we're doing. It is a hard time, but we knew this was coming. And so with that, the allocation of the request of the six million dollars was made known to our mayor, as well as the folks that were on the call. Because even with that six million dollars, we have no surplus. We're not asking for the six million dollars and we have a hundred thousand dollars in surplus. That six million dollars will flatten us out to zero. So we're balancing that budget. That means we don't have to worry about PSC and G coming to turn our lights off, you know, theoretically. And if you've ever had your lights turned off and you went to that box and that little orange thing was on there, you know exactly what I'm talking about. So these are hard times, and we've had to make some hard decisions. Yes, we're not filling certain administrative positions. Yes, we are going to reduce certain stat. Yes, I've had to make that, that determination as the superintendent. That is why I'm sitting here. But I'm not doing that without strong determination and resolve that we can make it through this. These cuts are not just this year. The fair funding is not just this year. This has been a perfect storm that has been coming, that has been ignored for far too long. And I promised the board when I became superintendent that the accountability would not just be on the school district. And I stick by that word. The accountability in terms of the allocation and the responsibility to fair funding our students in this district is of paramount. And so that's the reason why I made the determination to request the six million dollars on this initial budget. So yes, we will have to go back because this is not the final budget. But I stand firm, this will not be balanced on the backs of teachers, it will not be balanced on the backs of loss of instruction, it will not be balanced on the loss of opportunities for the students and the families who send their children to this public school system. I stand firm in that. Those will be my recommendations moving forward. But I'm always willing to go back and examine and reexamine and bring everyone to the table as I have done and I will do for those who are invested in the children in this community. That is why I'm here, that is what we will do, and as long as I'm the superintendent, that will be my focus. So that is the reason why we're asking those allocation of funds. There's no stuttering or stammering in this expectation. So again, I will review, go over, and have this conversation at any time with anyone. But it's not my job to lead the municipality, it is not my job to lead other entities, it is my job to lead this school district.
Thank you, Dr. Ricks.
Hi, everyone. The Curriculum Committee met on March fifteenth. We had a very long agenda, so if you'll bear with me. Number one, we recommend that the board approve the ESL three-year plan. We also discuss Alec Allison drugist to take the spring twenty twenty-two Pyramid Model Training, a framework for promoting effective practices for young children's social and emotional development on April fifth through April seventh, at the cost of three hundred and twenty-five dollars to the district. We're also recommending that the Department of Special Service partner with Building a Village or Transition Support Program lead by Mr. Lederick Holmes and Mr. Bill Davis to run from April fourth, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. That training include activities such as pre-employment transition services, access information across the state, and support funding for the New Jersey Council of Disabilities. It's a, it's a, it's part of a grant. We also recommend that the board approve AmeriCorps to collaborate with FullfieldNewJersey.org to donate supplies and materials needed to complete a school garden at the Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School. We recommend the board approve the Edinburgh Park High School, Middle School, and to partner with what YMCA grade among the county to provide the Boys and Girls Youth Council program for up to eighty students in grades seven through eight, April first through May We are recommending that we renew the middle school wrestling club for the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two school year. We recommend the board approve, the board approve to develop and submit an amendment to the Elementary and Secondary Education Act grant application. We recommend the board approve to develop and submit an application for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three New Jersey AmeriCorps Formula Grant. We recommend the board approve the twenty twenty-two school year special education extended a year program to operate from July sixth through August sixteenth, Monday through Friday at the Bradley Elementary School and the Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School. We recommend the approval of the STEM summer school program to run from July sixth, twenty twenty-two, to August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at the Bradley Elementary School, Thurgood Marshall Elementary School, and the Dr. Martin Luther King Upper Elementary School. We recommend that the board approve the STEM summer school program to run from July sixth, twenty twenty-two, to August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, at Martin Luther King Upper Elementary site for grades four through six. We recommend that the board approve twenty twenty-two Asbury Park Middle School, grades seven through eight summer school teachers effective July sixth, twenty twenty-one through August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. And we are recommending that the board approve the twenty twenty-two Asbury Park High School Summer School teachers effective July sixth, twenty twenty-one through August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. We are recommending.
You mean twenty-two?
Did I say? Oh, yeah. Yes, twenty twenty-two. Right, Mr. West?
That is correct. We made some of those corrections. Thank you.
Thank you. We are also recommending the board to approve hire of a Summer Dream Academy math teacher for pre-algebra and algebra enrichment cohort, twenty twenty-six. We're recommending the board approve Brookdale instructor to conduct forty hours of ELA Boot Camp Cohort, twenty twenty-six. Recommending the board approve for Brookdale instructor to conduct forty hours ELA Boot Camp Cohort, twenty twenty-five. Recommending that the Dream Academy Summer School staff effective July sixth through twenty-first through August sixteen, twenty twenty-two. Thank you. Twenty twenty-two. And recommend the board approve ten ESL teachers to attend the annual NJTESOL conference on June second, twenty twenty-two. And added was, we recommend the board approve Mr. George Markey, Asbury Park High School music teacher to march in opening day parade for Asbury Park Little League with fifteen music students on Saturday, April second, twenty twenty-two. The parade will commence at Veteran Park on Fifth Avenue at ten forty-five, and that is at no cost to the district. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Ricks. Mr. Gorilla?
Thank you, Madam President. So Buildings and Grounds, we have a few items to, to report on, we spoke about in our meeting. There were a couple of facility use requests that are in the system but are missing some paperwork, so we, but we anticipate that both organizations are going to, are requesting fee waivers. The application will, will be presented to the board for approval of a fee waiver if all the documents are received in time for our meeting. I don't know if it did, so we're going to have to wait on that a little bit. But the, one was from Good News Radio, Gospel Choir Concert at the High School for May eighth. And then All Three Points Soccer, which is a soccer skills clinic at Bradley Field, Mondays and Wednesdays, April, April and May. We also spoke about lead testing in water, so all districts are required to test for lead in water this year. Additional testing is required, as the state, the state just allowed for water fountains to be reopened. Testing by state-approved lab should be completed by mid-April. In terms of the three ESSER bid proposals, the administration is reexamining the allocation of ESSER funds to building projects, Dominic alluded to this. We may delay the lesser priority projects to free up ESSER funds in order to reduce the financial impact on the district. Also, handicap ramp at the high school. It has been reported that there is no handicap ramp, ramp at the front entrance of the high school. I got stopped at Wegmans about this. And essentially, it's a falsehood. The handicap ramp for the high school is located on the west side of the building, utilizing the media center entrance. Additionally, there's a wheelchair lift that's being installed for accessibility to the College CTE wing. The district architect is working with the buildings and ground, the Buildings and Ground Supervisor, as well as local and state officials, to obtain the proper permits. Just wanted to make sure that fake news doesn't spread. Other things include MLK, the elevator repair, a backorder part needed to be complete, needed to complete repairs to the elevator. It's been received by the contractor and the contractor, we expect to be out in the next two weeks.
They're, they're returning tomorrow.
Okay, great. And also, the architect is working on a bid to replace the existing elevator, upgrading the car and all mechanicals. The bid was opened in February, but the prices exceeded our district budget. So in December, the district received a grant from the SDA, and that grant, along with district funds, will be used for the new project. We also spoke about the Bradley School playground equipment. Buildings and Grounds is evaluating the anchoring system for. Buildings and Grounds is evaluating the anchoring system for playground equipment at the Bradley Elementary School as there may be repairs and replacements needed. Then we had a conversation about shared services, and this is something that we discussed because of a recent kind of notice regarding shared services with other school districts, and also a few different kind of New Jersey School Boards Association meetings where they spoke about how there are certain state programs that are incentivizing school districts to look at shared services in order to eliminate expenses and reduce costs. And so, obviously, even though utilities is a small percentage of the greater budget, I think it's important, and I think the folks on the committee thought it was important to still explore this. So, the district is exploring shared services with the city in the past, but neither group had adequate staffing to cover the other. The way the incentivizing worked was that essentially, the, I think it's through the DCA, the DCA incentivizes the school districts to study shared services, not only with other cities, but with the municipal part of the city, but also with other school districts. And I just found out that the school districts don't even need to be adjacent to one another in order to explore those shared services. So, if you're, let's say, Keensburg School District and Asbury Park School District, and you want to come together on a joint contract on, let's say, landscaping or snow removal, the DCA has kind of a program that gives guidance, best practices, and resources to achieve those kind of goals of reducing expenses. So, the administration is gonna be looking into that opportunity, right, Mr. Hastings? And the Finance Committee said that we'd be on board with that, so. And that's my full report. Thank you.
Our policy's real short in Seoul's second meetings today, so that's it. And there isn't any new policies to be introduced tonight. Short and sweet. Thank you. All right, we're gonna open, I'm sorry, we're gonna do the public participation in accordance with the board policy, zero one six seven.
In accordance with Board Policy zero one six seven, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-and-answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you, Madam. I apologize. Just so everybody knows, we were just discussing some of the downloaded agenda. It was missing a few pages, so I was just telling Mr. Lotaraca where to find the additional pages, so I'm sorry about the interruption.
No problem. At this time, we'll open up public participation.
My name is Mrs. Anderson Bray. I'm a resident of Asbury Park. I have a few statements, I guess, because you're not gonna answer the questions. I'd like to know, since you know that you have so many special needs children, what programs are you gonna afford for those children that are on home instruction? Seeing that you still haven't-
Madam, direct your comments to me, sweetie.
Anybody can listen to the comment. I'm looking down, so what's the problem now? If you feel like I'm not addressing it to you, I am. I'm looking down so I can concentrate. If you want me to directly say it to you, Ms. Cook, I will. Well, you being head over here, you guys have lack of communication, Ms. Cook. I don't like the way that you all run things, Ms. Cook. I think that you all should have some type of courses or whatever for the administration to learn how to communicate amongst each other, Ms. Cook. I also would like to say to you, Ms. Cook, that I think that being that is the third marking period, and you all, Ms. Cook, started my daughter a month behind in school, where is her honor roll and all that, Ms. Cook? But instead, you all keep giving her incomplete and all that stuff and marking her absent. You're messing up her transcripts, Ms. Cook. Where is the twenty-two million dollars of the COVID grant that you got, but you have the eight million dollar deduction, Ms. Cook? Also, you keep on talking about a budget, but you all keep getting grants, and you all are behind, Ms. Cook? Because it should be mandatory in high school to have co-op, Ms. Cook. Don't you think so? Because we get into high school, that means that you're getting ready to enter the real world, Ms. Cook. Why are you guys so behind, but you're getting all this money? You know, Ms. Cook? That's what I would like to know, Ms. Cook. Is that okay with you, now that I've directed everything to you, Ms. Cook?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Bray.
Good evening, Madam President. May I approach, I have, may I approach the stand? I have some letters to hand out. Oh, sorry. My name is Aaron Williams.
I'm the founder, I'm at, my name is Aaron Williams and the founder of Asbury Park Tennis Initiative. I just wanted to read this letter to you guys and to express what's been going on with the program ever since our last meeting. We had made an incredible process since I first met with the Athletic Committee in March twenty twenty-one, just over a year ago. I am so grateful for the encouragement and support from the members of this board. Asbury Park Tennis Initiative has been working with students from the Asbury Park School District through the Boys and Girls Club of Monmouth County. We are seeing great deal of interest in the sport of tennis, and more importantly, the transformation taking place from the leadership skills and team building that comes from playing. To put it simply, I see black excellence blooming. I see myself in the young people as they play tennis on an indoor basketball court for the first time. My first time was playing on a brick cement wall behind my mom's apartment in Camden County. And yet, the resilience I'm seeing from the students of Asbury Park is the same resilience that led me to become the captain of my college tennis team, who ultimately won two national championships. This board knows more than anyone that when our youth have the opportunity to thrive, there's no stopping what they're able to accomplish. That's why I'm looking forward to have the continued support of this board as Asbury Park Tennis Initiative raises the funds to bring back the tennis courts. We are working hard to secure funding so we can complete the project at no cost to the school district or taxpayers of the city of Asbury Park, just like the Donald Hamery basketball courts. As we talk to supporters, we remind them that this is much more than just about tennis. This is about providing educational nourishment, leadership skills, healthy activities focused on mental health and personal well-being. It's always been ensuring that kids have a healthy meal to eat after school after all the physical activities. The thing about sports is athletes become a family and always look out for their teammates no matter what obstacles is in front of them. I applaud the Asbury School District for your tireless work, and I hope the progress we had made over the past year makes you proud of what we accomplished. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Anyone else? At this time, I'll close public comment. I make a motion to close this meeting? Sure. With revisions of the Open Public Meeting Act, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and exact stint, the agenda of this meeting, to the Asbury Park Press, and new poster on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two via email. Copies of this notice has been placed at the administrative building, Building Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the city clerk on March twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Our mission statement: Asbury Park District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses skills and character to succeed in a diverse, involving global society. Roll call, please.
Ms. Sewell, Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Mr. Lotaraca, Mr. Remmy, Ms. Ricks, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Lozinski, Ms. Cook.
Please rise for the flag. If everyone could keep standing just just a moment, just to give a moment of silence for everyone in Ukraine.
The superintendent's presentation for this portion of the meeting will be recognizing our staff members of the month. So, with that being said, I would like to call up Ms. Theodore Jackson Byers for Bradley Elementary School.
So, our Bradley Elementary School staff member of the month, when I say she exemplifies student-centered she is, for example, I asked her just to be here tonight because we had something student-centered, and she just came. And so, I'd just like to say a special shout-out and congratulations to Ms. Donna Ficarra, our Bradley Elementary School Staff Member of the Month. I had to surprise her. When I tell you she graces sunshine when the rain, and she makes lemonade out of lemons. Thank you, Ms. Donna. We have, you have a certificate, Ms. Donna, in the school. I know, I just had to surprise you. I knew you were coming, no matter what.
Thank you, Ms. Donna. Congratulations, congratulations. Turn around, turn around, turn around. Sorry.
You know, sometimes I have to kind of, you know, wrangle Ms. Jackson Byers in, because you know, she can go. She was my former vice principal, so I know. So, thank you. Next up, we have Dr. Jackson from Thurgood Marshall.
Good evening, everyone, again. Our Staff Member of the Month for Thurgood Marshall Elementary School is none other than Ms. Regina Lynn Jagoo. Ms. Jagoo is one of the backbones of our school. Anything and everything that the student staff or myself needs at Thurgood, she is willing to do. She volunteers to do extra lunch duties for me daily. She brings things in for children without anyone even knowing, but I do. And she's always willing to just make our school the vibrant and wonderful place that it is. Without her, Thurgood Marshall would just not be the same. So, Ms. Jagoo, on behalf of your TMES family, we adore you, we appreciate you. Congratulations, and thank you so much.
Next up, Mr. Perry Medina from MLK Upper Elementary.
Good evening, once again. My name is Perry Medina, principal of Martin Luther King Upper Elementary. Unfortunately, Mr. Elliot Ramirez was unable to make it tonight, but I do want to say a few words about him. He is a dedicated staff member, and ironically, always present and always in attendance, but I'm sure he had some sort of emergency and, you know, why he wasn't here. He is a fourth-grade ELA teacher. He is unafraid of trying different things, unafraid of receiving constructive criticism to refine his craft. He is truly an inspiration to our students and to myself. His work ethic is something to be proud of. So, on behalf of MLK, I'd like to congratulate him, and I will present him with his award and certificate tomorrow. Thank you.
Dr. Howard Morris for the Asbury Park High School.
Good evening. Asbury Park High School has chosen Mr. Alexander Provenza as our Staff Member of the Month. Mr. Provenza is a math teacher at the Asbury Park Elementary School. Never complains. This year, we asked him to teach financial literacy for the seventh and eighth-grade teachers, and he didn't complain. He currently works as the, one of the boys volleyball club coaches, and he was chosen as the Monmouth County Wrestling Coach of the Year this year, and we're very proud of that. He's been working with our wrestling program in the middle school prior to coming to the high school. And lastly, he currently asked if he can volunteer to start a chess club for the seventh and eighth-grade team twice a week, and we're gonna be happy for that. So, again, we're happy to have Mr. Provenza at our high school.
Congratulations, congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Month. Madam President, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Before we open public comment, we're gonna have a comment from Arlo or Adam.
In accordance with Board Policy zero one six seven, the Asbury Park Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and other matters of importance, and provides members of the public with the opportunity to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The public comment portion of the meeting is not a question-and-answer session, and all public comments shall be directed to the board president or the presiding officer of the meeting. Members of the public who wish to make public comments must be recognized by the presiding officer and provide his or her name, municipality of residence, and group affiliation if applicable. All public comments shall be directed to the presiding officer and are limited to three minutes in duration. Members of the public who do not follow the foregoing rules and/or interfere with the orderly operation of the board meeting may be removed from the meeting.
Thank you, Adams. At this time, we'll open up public comment. I'm gonna make a motion to move into executive session, where as a public- I'm going to make a motion to move into executive session, whereas the public, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act allows exclusion from discussion at the public participation of the meeting of certain matters as outlined below, and whereas the Asbury Park Board of Education was to discuss such matters made and will make such discussions public when an proper conclusion has been made, now therefore been resolved that on, that March 24th, 2022, at Asbury Park, New Jersey, for the purpose of outline and described below, upon return, actions may be taken. Confidential matters pursuant on court orders, impact rights to receive federal funds, unwarranted invasion of individual privacy, collective bargaining, acquisition of real property or investment of funds, public safety procedures, litigation or contact matters, or alternate contact privileges, personnel matters, implications of penalties upon an individual. Motion, please. I'll move it. All in favor?
And for the members of the public who are present and may be watching elsewhere, the Board is about to retire to executive session for approximately 15 minutes. The Board will not be taking any action in executive session. The reason for the executive session is to discuss personnel matters, matters related to collective bargaining, labor issues, and personal matters and student matters. Again, we'll be returning in about 15 minutes. Thank you.
Motion to move back into public session? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Halls, Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Mr. Lattaraca, Mr. Remy, Ms. Ricks, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Lozinski, Ms. Cook.
The monthly headquarter, please. Dr. Howard.
Good evening. The HIV report is listed in the agenda. Three items. So I have page six. Page six. So there were three, three reported HIV complaints. There were, sorry, there were three separate incidents. And in the first incident, there were three allegations. One was founded, and the second incident, there were two allegations, and they were both founded. And in the third incident, there was one allegation which was founded. They both resulted in parent conferences for all three of the students.
Thank you, Dr. Howard. State matters report.
I'm going to reserve my time for later in the meeting, possibly.
All right.
I have a motion for nine A and B and number 10 in the calendar. Any questions or comments? Mr. Lattaraca? Mr. Grillo? Ms. Breach? Mr. Remy? Ms. Ricks? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Lozinski? Ms. Cook? Thank you.
The superintendent's agenda, please.
Madam President, I'd ask for a consent agenda for all items on B1 through B5, excuse me, B6.
Move it. May I, just on the policies, some of the approved dates have to be changed. It says March 17th, which was the original date of our meeting this month, so just wanted to make it note that. And there were some changes with the dates with the curriculum agenda. I just wanted to make sure that was included.
Okay, we'll make the adjustments as noted. Any questions or comments on B section?
I have one quick comment. B2, so their retirements. I think that's pretty phenomenal that we have, we have four longstanding employees of the district that put in well over 20 years, each one of them. And I just think that's, maybe acknowledge them just publicly or something, I think that's phenomenal that they stayed. Best wishes on their retirements.
So we'll be doing a recognition of those staff at the June meeting?
The business.
This is for all items, B1 through B6. Ms. Lozinski? Mr. Grillo?
Yes, but I'll need to abstain from any items related to B1.
Thank you. Ms. Breach? Mr. Lattaraca? Mr. Remy? Ms. Ricks? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Cook? Motion carries. Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for all items, C1, number one to C3, number nine.
That doesn't, that's separating the budget. I still have that page.
Yes, that separates the budget as a separate vote. Moved by Ms. Lozinski, seconded by Ms. Ricks. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, this is for all items, C1, number one to C3, number nine. Ms. Lozinski? Ms. Ricks? Ms. Breach? Mr. Grillo? Mr. Lattaraca? Mr. Remy? Mr. Saunders? And Ms. Cook? All items carry.
Can I just, for women, just, I want to bring something up with my Madam President. The railroad crossing at six, we discussed it briefly with the superintendent about New Jersey Transit wanted to close the street there, but I think the suggestion was to keep a pedestrian trunks for the students that go back and forth, and the people they utilize for fields and things. So I just wanted to memorialize it as a vote, so the Board supports that, letter in opposition to the closure, because I know we discussed it, but I think the Board needs to vote on that.
So, what we, just for clarification, we're waiting to get communication from the municipality utilizing their language in their letter to the New Jersey Department of Transportation about the Sixth Street Crossing. It was discussed that we would like to send a joint from the school district, including the Board, but once we get that, then we will move to provide a letter of support for, in support of the municipality about the Sixth Street closing.
So I'd like to make a motion about issuing that letter in support of that closing for the city.
Does that have anything to do with the safe routes to schools thing? Okay.
That's, and that's New Jersey Transit, it's just, yeah.
I'll second it.
This is a motion to write a letter in support of the city on their Sixth Avenue crossing position. Ms. Lozinski? Mr. Grillo? Ms. Breach? Mr. Lattaraca? Mr. Remy? Ms. Ricks? Mr. Saunders? Ms. Cook? Thank you. Could I have a motion for the adoption of our tentative budget on page C5, number one?
I'll move it.
Yeah, I'll speak to it, because I'm kind of on the record here as not supporting the budget in its current form. I think, I'll first talk about what I see as our failures. We failed to define the issue. We failed to explain school funding. We haven't disseminated the accomplishments that we've had as a district. And we haven't discussed the cuts we've made and why. We are not at the point whereupon this budget passing, which will, just by human nature, bring about a ton of negativity toward the district, to be able to explain yet why we should be at a higher per pupil, cost per pupil. I can think of some reasons, but we haven't done that analysis, we haven't presented that. We don't have a plan. We're not exactly sure why it was 8.4 this year, and what will it be next year and the year after. We have to develop a plan. We have not decided about facilities in this district. We have not shown that our, our footprint has shrunk as the district has shrunk. We haven't answered the myriad of questions that we're going to be hit with yet, which is why I think we all agree, or at least I agree, where we need to go. We're going to need to go with large, local increases in local support. We have to go there. What I'm disagreeing with is how we go there. We're going to come out with a budget now, which is going to shock people, because we have not done those things. And I guess to say, well, it's up to the city to do that, it's a little naive to think the city's not going to turn and say, well, it's those knuckleheads on the school board. There's a little, there's a little bit of, it's everybody else's job. And I think our job for our kids is going to be more effective if we can move forward with information and a plan that is persuasive to some. We will still get a ton of negativity, but I believe if we do it right, we can, we can persuade those that agree with the concept that if Asbury Park wants to be a great city, it needs a thriving school district. If Asbury Park wants to be a great city, it needs to support its children's education. And we do that as a group, from the community, from nonprofits, from the city, helping out. And we have specific asks and specific ideas that we can then present to the city, having said, this is what we've already done, and we just have to make quick decisions on certain things that we've dithered about here for about two years at least. I don't know. I would argue, if you do it right, and if you get community support, and if you get more people together, you are doing your job. It's going to be better for the kids in the long run. If you say, this is what we do, and oh, hey, here's a $6 million increase out of the blue, where people still don't even understand funding, they've been griping about the tax increases, thinking because we're spending too much money, rather than understanding the local share concept. We have not presented that. I think it's our job to do that, because it's going to make us better. And so with that, I would say, we have to buy one more year. And how do we do it? We have to give something up, and I would move that we take 2.5 million more of the ESER funds and repurpose it to reduce the tax increase from 6 million to 3.5, if I did my subtraction correct in my head. So that, I don't disagree with where we've got to get. I disagree with some of the statements about what I, what I view my job to be here, and therefore, that's how I would solve this year's problem. It makes it a bigger problem for next year, but again, I believe we can bring some people, not everybody, but some people along, who will understand what we're doing, what we've accomplished so far, what we plan on accomplishing in the future, why we feel more confident with this administration that we're going to accomplish it. And the more people within the city who believe in the schools, the better it's going to be for our kids. Thanks.
Sure. I just have a smaller comment, because I feel like Dominic stole my speech. But my biggest concern in terms of this is firmly rooted in the kids of Asbury Park, the children of Asbury Park, simply because we're a town of, let's say, 72% renters at this point, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less. And I feel like, I feel like the, it's a false argument to say it's taxpayers versus the kids, right? I always thought that that was a false argument, because we're so intersecting in this, in this municipality, in this, in this city, where, yeah, the property owners and homeowners, some of whom have kids in the school district, not all, but some, are going to think about moving, selling their house and moving away from the district, which caused disruption in terms of enrollment that already we're having issues with. And also, the fact that those that rent, they're going to see their rent go up, which also will potentially displace families and children from the district. So I wanted to just add that on to Dominic's comment, because a lot of times, the kind of perception is that it's this segregation of homeowners and property, and property owners and taxpayers here, and the kids and the families that send their kids to Asbury Park Schools over here. So that's, that's all I wanted to add to that, is that this is, it's all, it all intersects, so that's all.
The only thing I'd like to say to the Board is that this is a tentative budget. It has to go to the county and sent back to the district. And in between now and our next meeting in, in March, we can make changes. We can work with the administration and see if we can do some other creative financing, as Dominic has said, and then come to an agreement. I own a final budget in March, and, I mean, April, and then we can also have until second, I think, second week in May to really have a final, final. So what I would encourage tonight, so we can move the process forward to adopt the tentative, and then see when we go from there.
Would that include, so if we, if we adopt the tentative budget, what, what does, what does that look like from when the actual budget takes place? What are the negotiations or the meetings, or, you know? Is there a set, kind of set of actions that, that takes place?
I would encourage the Finance Committee to take that helm and, you know, go forward and have meetings with the administration to see what other things can be done to change until it becomes final. That's, that's what I would do. It's entirely up to the Board.
Well, I think the administration's going to put it, I mean, we're pretty late to make cuts, which is why I think the only issue on the table is if we can repurpose ESER funds.
Yeah.
So I, well, to Joe's point though, I mean, I can, I could get the yes if it's a lot more formal about that issue. But I've got, if that's not a possibility to get more formal, to have that, then I remain a no.
So what is it you're asking to have this tentative budget approved tonight? What would be your addendum to the resolution?
Well, the addendum I want would be to change the budget to 2.5 million more. What I could probably live with is if the administration is open to a good faith analysis to rework ESER funding, or if they feel this has to be the budget for the policy reasons they see that are critical to where the ESER money is currently going.
So would you, if the motion was to accept the tentative budget with a revisiting of the ESER funds to try to reduce the tax increase for this year? Is that what you want?
Can I just, the tentative budget needs to be submitted by Monday to the county superintendent. The tentative budget will then be reviewed by the county super, county business administrator. They will look at it, make sure it's correct, give me corrections or comments that I will then incorporate, and then they'll say, yes, that budget is approvable from their standpoint. In end of April, beginning of May, the board would then be asked to adopt the final budget. And state monitor or superintendent can correct me, but at that point, we then either submit the budget as it was approved during this particular session, or we adopt a budget and we notify the county of the changes that were made by the board. So that's sort of where we are right now. Now, between tonight and what happens a month from now is really up to the board and committees and superintendent and myself and the other folks involved with this process to address. But I don't think we can submit a resolution to submit to the county with stipulations.
I think we have an understanding of that, you know? The hope is there would be a change between now and then.
Well, I don't know all this stuff. I just turned to Dr. Adams and Ms. Morrison and said, you know, I presented my position. I don't know if anybody's with me or not, but is this, are we going to be negotiating on ESER funds or you're not going to? And that'll pretty much solve it.
Well, I would also say that if that's the case, can't we do a separate, can we do a separate resolution calling for, you know, a certain amount of finance committee meetings, like once a week for the next month, to check in to see where we're at with it?
I would not suggest that you do that. However, you certainly amongst yourselves as board members can commit to sitting down as often and as frequent as necessary. You want to be able to submit a clean resolution, if you will, to the county. But again, you can, whichever way you vote, to the extent that tonight amongst yourselves, you can come to some sort of understanding that you're going to be reviewing, revisiting, looking at the potential use of ESER funds and other sources, you certainly can commit to each other to engage in that type of a process. There's nothing wrong with that. And that would not have to be memorialized in any way in a resolution or anything like that. It's just something that we're saying out loud essentially tonight to each other, committing to each other, that that's, you know, what's going to happen. That's the plan, if you will. But I would certainly not want you to mess with or otherwise fool with your approval because the tight timeframe. And again, as Dr. Adams said earlier, this is not any one person's fault. This is the way that the process happens and the timeline happened from the governor to the Department of Education down to us. So unfortunately, we are kind of behind in April, or for those, given the St. Peter's Peacock shot clock, we do have a shot clock that we're looking at, which is Monday. So we are kind of, the time is now, if you will.
If I may, I think everyone made very good points here, but we have to agree with that. We can, this is tentative budget, it's not finalized. We can always go back and visit. We can definitely do a caveat where we do sit down, have our meetings, see what else we can do to bring funding in. I personally am supportive of the budget. Roll call, Mr. Hastings.
This is for the adoption of the tentative budget. Ms. Lizinski?
Yes.
Ms. Breach?
Yes.
Mr. Grillo? Mr. Lataroca? Mr. Remy?
Oh.
Thank you. Ms. Ricks?
Yes.
Mr. Saunders?
No.
Ms. Cook?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Can I make a motion to close the meeting? No? Oh, state monitor?
That's all right, if you want to. I would just like to, first of all, thank the board, obviously, for the vote. But also add that I respectfully listen to Dominic to everything that you're saying. I do have to, as in public, as the state monitor, remind the board that the number one obligation here, first and foremost, is to provide a budget that will address the needs of T and E, their inefficient education for the students in the Asbury Park school system. To those that are listening, I would simply comment as a monitor that all over the state, it's been evidenced that as a district becomes smaller and smaller, its costs unfortunately go higher. And a lot of people do not understand why. And it's, I like to use a very simple example, and I don't mean to demean the process or the example at all, but to say that if you are operating, for instance, a classroom, and you are paying for the heating in that classroom and the electricity in that classroom, it doesn't matter whether there are five students or 25. The bill to heat and provide electricity is the same. So obviously, if you have 25 students and a larger population, it spreads out more and it directly, directly then affects the per pupil cost in the end result. Thorough and efficient has been tested, as you know, it's been tested in the courts. It's addressed every year at budget time. But I would like to go back and address it for a moment in a different context. In the first meeting that we had, Dr. Adams listed all of the different areas that had been consulted and had the opportunity to share with him their suggestions on this budget. It was thorough. It's a long list. I don't think it could include anybody else. Everybody had an opportunity to look at it and make suggestions. I thought that it was very thorough. If I had not thought that, I would have told them somewhere along the line and suggested or directed, which I have by law the ability to do, that they bring in all of those stakeholders. Now we are at the point, and I know that people, Dominic was right, people do not understand public school budgets. They are difficult to understand. I'm not in any way demeaning anyone that doesn't understand it. The issue is, at this point in time, the administration has said tonight to the board, this is what we're asking for because in consultation with all of those groups and a review over and over and over again by Mr. Hastings and Dr. Adams, this is the budget we have come up with, and we are at a loss to present to you something that would reduce this. So now, tonight, it comes back to the board. And in your process from this point until you adopt the final budget, let me say it's up to the board. If you have suggestions to the administration to reduce this $6 million, as Dominic has done by referring to the ESER funds, I interpret that to be your suggestion, then the rest of the board has the responsibility not to sit and say, I don't like that budget, I'm not going to support it. Well, then, give us one that will. You will support, you can support. Because voting no simply says, I don't like this budget, but I'm going to sit back and you can bring two or three more if you come up with them, and I'll consider those. That's not the role of the board. The role of the board right now is to provide a budget that addresses the needs of the students of this district. The needs are greater with COVID as we know. We have all kinds of additional issues with children that teachers are dealing with every day in their classrooms, just as parents are at home. But the bottom line here is that there has to be a budget, just as a guideline for the future, in April. There has to be a budget. The administration have counseled with them. They are willing to consider anything that you as an individual board member would like to see considered as a reduction in the budget itself. Dr. Adams indicated it was not going to be on the backs of teachers. If that's something you're not in agreement with and you think there should be 20 more school district teachers to reduce the budget, share that with him. I'm sure he'll consider it. He may, he's not going to sit here and agree to it, that he will do it. But we can't have it, obviously, both ways. And as I said, this is a budget that has to be resolved now. And going to, whether it's council or any other place, and talking to them about plans for the future, or next year, or five years from now, is a great idea, but it's not going to address this particular budget, which much, much must, excuse me, be addressed and certified for this coming school year. So I again think, obviously, this is not something that the state does not want in any stretch of the imagination to rule or run your school district. We have, as you can tell from my, I guess you could say, omitting many reports to the board verbally, and sharing with people, as I have felt the need over this time that I've been here, to talk to them personally, if I saw something that I thought was not appropriate or should be addressed in the district. I am a low-key monitor. I am not going to be out here flashing and letting people think that I'm running the school district. That's not my style. It's not my working mode. But I will be here to help you any way that I can. Mr. Hastings knows, Dr. Adams knows, I have contacted everybody that I can think of, even those that are stopped taking my calls in Trenton. I'm sure they're saying that woman's on the phone again. This is unfortunately for us where we are as a district. And the thing that, with the property values going up, with the enrollment coming down, the fair share of the school district, which is the amount of money the taxpayers pay, chip in to run it, has gotten way out of line. And that's what we're addressing. And I don't see any way out of that because, you know, you have to sit down and, I always say, count the number, count your votes, or count the heads, whatever expression you use. And when you look at the state, you know, there's, I don't think there could be anybody in Warren County that would have one bit of sympathy or interest in the state that we're in. And unfortunately, there are a lot of those people in the state. So when you talk to one possible person, you know, you don't get a real true indication of will the state change its formula, or where are they going with it, or is there going to be any relief? Even if you talk to that person, say, oh, yeah, I'll look into it, I'll try to go out there and fight for you. There are a lot of people out there that are not going to be sympathetic to it because they come from a different set of circumstances. So I thank you for your vote, and I welcome the opportunity. I'm here, call me. Get my cell phone from Dr. Adams. If you don't want to share with everybody your suggestion for what be cut or where we go with this, please call me. I'll be very willing to work with you and do what I can to help support you, to provide that thorough and efficient education. And I thank you for your patience.
Motion closed.
Thank you, everyone. Any other?
All in favor, yay.
All in favor.